There is, should you hear the fire alarm, please leave in an orderly fashion and meet underneath Waitrose's canopy. We have had no problems with the technology this evening so far, so we're just having a slight problem at the moment, but we'll carry on, shall we? Right. Could I just ask you all to make sure, oh, there, you've got your fire regulations, you can read those at your leisure. Could I also ask you, please, to turn off your phones or put them to silent. Going to these microphones, councillors, you'll notice you've got a new card, they can go in, I'm told, anywhere at all, upside down, forwards, backwards, whatever, but they can go in, they can also be used by leaning them on the top. But if you look at the shape of the console, you will notice there's a slight floor. If you decide to put them on the top, they tend to slip off, so I suggest you slip them in the back. And it's the large button again at the front, and so far, they've worked very well this evening. Can I ask the members of the public to remember that this is not a public meeting, it's a meeting in public, and ask you, please, not to contribute to the proceedings unless you are doing so as a result of public speaking, in which case, obviously, we're delighted to hear from you. So, can I just remind, I think in fairness to the committee, I don't think I'm talking to anyone here this evening, but we are trying to make this an efficient, effective professional service, and that involves members and officers alike. The officers are doing their bit, and we have to do our bit, please, by calling in promptly any applications that you feel should come to committee. And by promptly, we mean three weeks from when they appear in your weekly list. So, please, can you get in the habit of checking that, flagging up to yourself and then to the officers if you think any application will need to come before committee? Please, can we minimise and make sure that late call-ins are exceptions? So, moving on to the items of business, the minutes of the last meeting, they have been lying, I'm sure, there. Are you content that I assign them as a correct record? Apologies for absence, Emma.
Thank you. We have apologies from councillors Pat Frost, Gillian Hargreaves and John Ward. Thank you.
And any declarations of interest before the meeting?
None before the meeting, but I believe Farnham Town Councillors declare a non-buccaneer interest.
Does anybody else have an interest they would like to declare before the meeting? Are there any questions?
None received.
And Peter or Louise, any relevant updates from government guidance or legislation?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have any updates this evening.
And in fact, I've forgotten to introduce the officers, so let me just do that to make sure everyone knows who is sitting here. On my far right, we have Lewis Jones from the Legal Department, Peter Cleveland, the Head of Development Control, Louise Jandell, the Area Head of Western and Southern DC, Ruth Daby, Principal Planning Officer, didn't get it right, did I? Never mind, Kayleigh Taylor and Chris Turner. Is that right, I hope? So, moving straight on then to the applications. Application A1, which is subject to public speaking, WA 2017 0883, land at the end of the cul-de-sac northwest side of Three Stars Road, Farnham. And the officer to present this is Louise, please.
Thank you, Chairman. This is the erection of a detached dwelling and garage with associated landscaping. The site is located on the north-eastern side of Three Stars Road. It is currently fenced off and has an extent planning permission for the erection of a detached dwelling and garage. To the north and east of the site are open fields, and to the west are residential properties along Three Stars Road. The site opposite has planning permission for a detached dwelling. This first photograph is taken from within the site, looking towards the rear boundary. The second photo is also taken from within the site, at the rear, looking towards the temporary accommodation that has been erected on-site, with the rear of number 29, the adjoining occupier, here in the distance. And this final photo at the bottom of your screen shows the side and rear of number 29, Three Stars Road. In these photos, the first photo is taken from within the site, looking towards the front of the site, with number 29 here to the side of the photograph, and this photograph is taking, looking out of the site to the east. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, the dwelling would be centrally positioned within its plot, set back from Three Stars Road, which is down here. A garage would also be positioned to the rear of the building, close to the boundary with number 29, Three Stars Road, which is here. These slides show the proposed elevations. As you can see, the proposal would have front gable features, a dorma and a porch feature. This slide shows a comparison between the proposed and the previously approved front elevations. The proposal would have a reduced height over the previous scheme, and would have a different design with the gables, as I previously described. This slide shows a comparison between the proposed and previously approved block plans. The proposal would be positioned closer to the boundary with number 29, Three Stars Road, more centrally within its plot, and the garage would be positioned closer to the boundary. The footprint of the building would have a slightly greater width and depth, and the building would be positioned slightly further from Three Stars Road than the approved scheme. The site is located within the built-up area boundary, as defined within the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan 2017. This conflicts with the 2002 local plan, which defines the area as being countryside beyond the Greenbelt and outside the developed area of Farnham, the boundary of which runs along this line here. The area shaded in blue is the outline of the Farnham built-up area boundary, as defined within the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan. As the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan is the most up-to-date development plan document, this should therefore be given the most weight, and limited weight should therefore be given to Policy C2 in the countryside, as it conflicts with the neighbourhood plan. If I could please draw members' attention to the update sheet. This corrects an error in the report, where irrelevant policies were referred to, which were policies of FMP10 and FMP11, because they only relate to sites which are outside the built-up area of Farnham. In addition, there is also draws your attention to some additional representations that have been received, and officers have commented on those. And also additional comments from the agent. In conclusion, the proposal is considered to be of an appropriate design, scale and form, that would have an acceptable impact on the surrounding countryside location, and the proposals would not harm the amenities of the adjoining occupiers. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, highway safety and parking, the loss of the existing agricultural use, the location of development and the effect on the SPA, and the matters for members' judgment are the impact on visual amenity and the impact on residential amenity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Louise. As I say, this application is subject to public speaking, and could I ask Mrs Bell an objector to this particular scheme to come forward? I know you've been here before, slightly new machines, but not really a great deal of difference, and four minutes from when you start speaking. It's the sort of, still the biggest button that is there.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Councillors. I'm here tonight to voice my strong objection to the current application to construct a house on the land immediately adjacent to us at the end of Three Stars Road, described as a variation of the approval given on the 8th of July 2016. The permission granted last year was for a dwelling of 245 square metres. This new application is for 333 square metres, and represents a substantial increase in footprint of approximately 35%, being achieved by expansion on all sides. The house, having been moved three metres nearer to our boundary, and with the front further forward, to a point where our interior, including our first-floor bathroom, would become entirely visible at all times through our large full-height picture window, giving particular concern at night when lit, and which will cause considerable loss of privacy. Although the site itself has significant depth, it is relatively narrow, and a house of such enormity would simply overpower us, causing unacceptable loss of light and privacy. The application includes windows on the western wall, albeit eye-level obscurally glazed, despite Condition Number Six prohibiting them in the previous approval. We are told that these could easily be changed at a later date under PDRs. We did meet with the applicant to try and discuss his proposals with a view to compromise. However, we were told that it was not open to negotiation. It would seem from application correspondence that the decision to recommend this proposal was reached by the case officer before submission on the 4th of May, and despite a verbal request from the Planning Department for the applicant to amend the plan, which we were informed was in line with objections raised, the applicant has not reduced the size of his proposal or returned to nearer its original footprint. It is important to point out that the case officer's report mentions inaccurate statements which are misleading, and I quote: "One such example of a dwelling of similar size and form is number 29, its immediate neighbour." Well, how can this be, when the proposal is for a house of 333 square metres, and ours at number 29 is 222 square metres, one-third smaller? We notice a discrepancy in the applicant's plan regarding the west boundary, whereby the proposal appears to incorrectly assume ownership of the boundary hedge. This may be significant to certain measurements, and could affect positioning of both the house and the garage in relation to proximity to our boundary. We wish you to note that the case officer highlights letters of support for the application, all of which bar two are from the individuals who were jointly beneficiaries of the sale of this land last year, and upon whom this development will have no visual impact. We feel that due to its mass bulk and prominence, situated on high ground, previously outside of the BUAB and bordering AGLV, that this current application represents considerable overdevelopment and conflicts with planning policies C2 and D4, and for these reasons must be refused. In the event that this application is approved, all conditions attached to the original permission of the 8th of July should remain, and removal of all PDRs is essential to end the assumption that little by little, a house of even more enormous proportions could be allowed to dominate the surroundings."
Thank you, Mrs Bell. Could I ask now Laura Burke to speak to us, who is a supporter of the scheme? Once again, the four minutes doesn't start until you start speaking, and it's the largish button at the bottom.
Good evening. As you know, a five-bedroom house has been approved of this site. This committee originally objected development here, but the planning inspector had found that aside from Section 106 issues, development of the site caused no harm to neighbours or the countryside. Since then, the current applicant has purchased the site and decided to pursue a modified design. This committee meeting follows four months of negotiation with officers. Prior to this, it was subject to four months' preparation work, including discussions with all neighbours. This represents a positive approach to planning, and has resulted in 10 local residents from Three Stars Road and two from Larkfield Road supporting the new design, and only one objection. This way of local support is clearly in favour of this application. We consider the objections from the neighbour are unjustified. The size of the dwelling has no impact on the neighbouring property, nor the character of the road. The front elevation is well detailed and of good proportions. The design is an enhancement compared to the previous scheme. The design approach referenced the Farnham Design Statement. This guidance confirms that locally, bricks are typically reddish, with flints used for detailing and clay roofs. The proposal responds to this local character. The siting of the house causes no harm to neighbouring amenity. There is a side-to-side distance of 12.7 metres between the eastern elevations of number 29 and the western elevation of the proposal. This is well in excess of policy guidance. The proposal is set one metre further north than the previous scheme, and there is good boundary cover which could be enhanced. The application plot is significantly larger than number 29, and comparative in size to the plot adjacent to number 34, where a 424-square-metre dwelling was approved on appeal. As a result, the proposal has a smaller plot-to-floor size ratio than either of these dwellings. This is a clear indicator that the scale is appropriate. The acceptability of scale is also clear when the width of the proposal is compared to plot width. In comparison to the two neighbouring approvals, the scheme occupies considerably less plot width, maintaining greater distances to both side boundaries. The house is 60 centimetres lower than the previous approval, with the eastern hip projection 15 centimetres lower. This tallest part of the building is set away from number 29, and confirms that the scale is acceptable. As you are aware, there is extent permission to develop the site, confirming the principle of housing here is acceptable. Since this permission was granted, the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan has been made, and has updated the built-up area boundary of Farnham. The site now falls within this designation, and the proposal therefore complies with the development plan. The impact on a nearby footpath has been appraised, with photos submitted to officers. These confirmed views or filters by existing landscaping. If glimpsed, the house could be seen in context with neighbouring houses. Given the distances involved and the previous approval, this scheme would have an acceptable impact on the countryside, and this conclusion tallies with those of the planning inspector. We commend your officer's report, which confirms compliance with the development plan, national guidance and the aims of sustainable development. The applicant would note that two recent decisions to refuse houses on-site and opposite have been overturned at appeal. Given the positive dialogue with officers and support from the vast majority of neighbours, we hope councillors will support their officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Burke. Thank you. Right, we have the ward councillor here, councillor Williamson, who wishes to speak, and you will have a chance to sum up at the end as well, councillor Williamson, you get two bites of the cherry, but I would ask that your summing up is slightly different from your introduction, if possible. So, would you like to make a comment at this point?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I will be, in fact, be very brief, and I called in this application basically because I wanted to allow Mr and Mrs Bell, the residents at number 29, to put their genuine concerns about this development forward to the members tonight. For those who were members of this committee last year, they will recall that on two occasions we rejected applications on this site which were overturned at appeal. We rejected them basically on a number of reasons, but one of the reasons was on the size and scale and its effect on number 29, which, when it was built, was at the end of the extremity of the town's built-up area, which has subsequently been moved to encompass this house when it was given the planning permission on appeal. What's happening now is that this, you know, the concerns that we had in terms of mass and size and proximity are being worsened. I mean, the thing is increasing in bulk by 30%. Its proximity to those huge windows which were facing the countryside and thought they were going to face the countryside forever are now so much closer. If we genuinely thought the previous one should have been rejected, we should absolutely reject this. Not that I like the one that has been approved, and I think many of the design features of this application are better, but it's just making the situation worse on the actual grounds which we objected to. I was going to raise, in fact, I'll still raise it, I was going to raise another point which has in fact been corrected, which I read when I came in, on the amendment sheet, the misinterpretation of the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan, FMP10. The report from the officers said that FMP10 was effective. FMP10 basically relates to building outside the town boundary, the built-up boundary. And this is a really sensitive area, because it's potentially a ribbon development, this being the N1, and I'm very pleased that the officers now say that this is within the town boundary, therefore FMP doesn't, FMP10 doesn't apply, therefore clearly, if it's outside the town boundary, it does apply. And I'll probably come back to that point later in another application. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Williamson. Just to clarify, this committee, as councillor Williamson said, turned down two applications on this site, and this site was intended to be outside the built-up area boundary. When we drew the built-up area boundary in the neighbourhood plan, we incorporated sites with planning permission, and also obviously sites that we had selected as strategic sites. So, just to make absolute sense, you can't possibly have two applications allowed on appeal, and then draw your line to say they can't be built. I mean, it would be unreasonable to say the least. So, that is why the boundary was amended. So, members, over to you. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm also ward councillor for where this is located. Now, I mean, I looked at this, and I thought this is a better design, certainly, but I'm slightly confused by figures that have been thrown at me from various directions. People have said that there's a 30 and a 35% increase. I stuck into my calculator the figures that are on...
Footprint.
The footprint area, yes, which is a 61% increase in the footprint. And I wondered, is there actually a limit when we're calling it a variation on a previous application, as to what is considered to be acceptable? Because I appreciate that the principle has been established on this site of development. It was a bungalow for a start, then a house, and now it does seem to me to be a bit of a monster. And this, I think, looks like what you'd probably call planning creep. I'm not suggesting necessarily that this is an abuse of the planning system, it may just be playing the planning system, and I don't think there's anything necessarily wrong with playing the system. That's what people have to do. But there seems to be some question over whether pre-development, whether PDR rights should be withdrawn from this completely or not. I think I would agree that we should expect it to come back to committee if we did in future, if there were going to be increases in size further than this. But I would like to know whether there's an increase in the footprint. I'd also like to, I'm just wondering whether there's an error here in the issue of saying on page 20 of this report. It seems to me that, unless I've misread it, officers are saying that the previous unilateral undertaking for four-bedroom house can be used without alteration for this, where I think we would need a replacement, because it's based on the number of bedrooms, the calculation that's required, so I'd like that clarifying. I am worried about the issue of the windows, the previous consent was to do with refuse to have windows. I will, I have made my mind, I'm going to listen to what the other members here say before I decide how I feel on this, because I don't know that we'd win it appeal necessarily if we turn it down, but we may have good reason to. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. Are you making notes, officers, and will you answer all of them at once, rather than keep sort of interrupting? Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Right, in that case, officers, could we have the answer straight away? Sorry, did you indicate councillor MacLeod? Did it very...
Yeah, thank you.
You must have done it very subtly.
I was thinking about it, but you brought me in. No, I think councillor Williamson and councillor Hyman have covered much of what I wish to say. I am particularly concerned about the issue of the windows, and also the issue, why has the house been moved closer to the boundary, the boundary, the contentious boundary? That would seem to be unnecessary. As councillor Williamson says, and councillor Hyman, it does seem to be a better design, so that's in favour of it. The principle of development has been established, but I see no reason why windows should be allowed if windows weren't previously allowed. And if the committee does decide to allow it, they seem to be fairly small windows. Is it possible to make it a condition that these windows wouldn't be allowed to be increased in size? So, that's my comments, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor MacLeod. I think we really are coming down to detail very quickly because of the principle that's already been established. Can the officers just answer some of the questions about the size, about PDR, what we can condition to make this less harmful to the neighbours? Could some of the officers sum it up, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Firstly, in relation to the query about the increase in size, I have calculated the footprint as being about 60% increase. There is no limit on what you can do as a variation. This application is a new planning application, so it doesn't seek to amend the previous scheme, it's a brand-new planning application, so effectively, anyone can come in for whatever they wish, and we will determine it on that basis. The reference in the description to the variation is really just to make it clear to the public that there was a previous scheme, and this is a difference to that scheme. In relation to removing permitted development rights, officers have recommended that permitted development rights for new windows on the side elevation facing number 29 is removed, are removed, and we haven't recommended that extensions are removed, but if members feel that that is necessary to grant planning permission, then that could be recommended by a councillor. In relation to the SPA, a new legal agreement has been received and relates to this specific application, doesn't rely on the previous legal agreement that was agreed for the old application. And I have touched upon this point, but in relation to the windows which face number 29, these are both high-level and obscure glazed, you can see those in this elevation here. And as I touched upon before, we have recommended a different condition, which I think is number seven or number five, which does remove any additional windows, and that would include enlarging those windows as well. I hope that covers the points raised. Thank you.
Unless anyone's got any new points, I'd quite like, no new points, please, I'd quite like to move to councillor Williamson and on to the recommendation, but if you have a new point, councillor Hyman, I hope it is a new point.
It's two points of clarification, because when I raised the issue on page, if you turn to page 20, if you wouldn't mind, halfway down it, where there's the largest paragraph there says that there is a contribution, and at the bottom of that paragraph, it says this figure is based on the proposal being a four-bedroom house, but this is a five-bedroom, isn't it?
No, it's four.
This is four, okay. My mistake, my mistake, thank you. We were talking about the conditions, the second point very quickly is, if we're now looking at pages 24 and 25, you're, actually, when I read them, I got slightly confused, because one of the conditions calls that wall a south-west elevation, and the next, that's Condition Five, calls it a south-west elevation, and Condition Seven calls it a western elevation. Can you just confirm we're talking about the same wall, even though we're calling it two different things? That is the same wall we're talking about, isn't it?
It is, but I think it would probably be helpful to clarify the condition which just refers to it as the western elevation, as the southwestern elevation for clarity.
Right, so we'll amend that when we do the condition. No, can we move on now, please, because I think you've made your point, you've had your answers.
I was going to propose the removal of the PDR on an extension, whether this was the right stage, Chairman. Could you advise me?
No, we'll do that when we get on to the conditions, thanks. So, can we take councillor Williamson's summing up then?
I haven't got too much to say, actually, other than on permitted development rights. I mean, if you just, the past is no predictor of the future, but looking at how this thing has grown, it's grown like topsy over the two years, and I think at the very least, there should be a stop to ensure that it doesn't grow by another 40% over the next two years. Thank you.
Right, so I think what we ought to do now is just look at the conditions and see which ones were going to strengthen before we look at the recommendations. So, we could just look at the conditions as they stand at the moment. With the help of the officers, can you take us through the conditions and tell us which ones you've changed and what you want to strengthen? Thank you.
Based on the comments this evening, I would recommend in strengthening Condition Five to not only remove permitted development rights for windows in the southwestern elevation, but also to remove permitted development rights for extensions to the property permitted under both Classes A and Class B of the GPO. And then, also based on the comments received, I'd recommend amending Condition Seven, so that it reads the windows in the southwestern elevation, so that both Condition Five and Seven are consistent with each other. Thank you.
Are members content with those changes to the conditions that offer some protection? In that case, could we move, please, to the recommendation? And the recommendation is that, subjects to Conditions 1 to 8, which have now been amended to include those points that we've just looked at with Louise, and the informatives 1 to 6, that permission be granted. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
And those against granting? And those against granting?
Three.
And any abstentions?
None.
Thank you very much indeed, so permission for that is granted. Moving straight on to the next application, which is also subject to public speaking. Number A two, WA twenty seventeen, one zero seven eight, twenty-five Alfred Road, Farnham, GU nine eight N D. Just reading it all out while the officers do a change, subtle or what. And it's, yes, it's Kayleigh that's going to introduce this for us, thank you very much.
Thank you, chairman. This application seeks the erection of a pair of semi-detached dwellings without buildings and new access following demolition of the existing dwelling. This application has been brought before the area committee at the request of a local member. The application site is located to the south of Alfred Road. The application site comprises a two-storey detached dwelling. Alfred Road is residential in character and comprises detached and semi-detached properties of different architectural styles. You can see St George's Road to the east here and Farnham train station to the north, approximately two hundred and seventy-five metres from the application site. These photographs show the front elevation of the existing dwelling. The front building line of the existing dwelling is set back from number twenty-three, but in line with number twenty-seven. This photograph shows the rear of the existing dwelling. And these photographs have been taken from the rear garden. This photograph here shows the rear garden, and this photograph here shows the rear of the dwellings along St George's Road to the east of the site. Permission is sought for the erection of a pair of semi-detached two-storey dwellings with habitable roof space and basements. There will be a total of four parking spaces provided at the front of the site. And there will be two outbuildings to the rear of the site. This slide shows the proposed floor plans. Basement is shown at the top left, the ground floor at the top right, the first floor bottom left, and the proposed second floor bottom right. Both dwellings would have three bedrooms. This slide shows the front elevation. The ridge height would match that of number twenty-three, and there will be dormer windows in the front roof slope. This slide shows the rear elevation, again with dormer windows in the roof slope. This slide shows the proposed north-eastern side elevation to the left and the proposed southwestern side elevation to the right, with the outline of number twenty-three shown behind. This application follows application WA twenty seventeen, zero five four seven, which was refused under delegated powers. The first reason for refusal was on the grounds that the proposal, by virtue of its scale, mass and bulk, resulted in a material loss of light and overbearing impact to number twenty-three. The second reason for refusal was due to the applicant not entering an appropriate legal agreement to secure sand contributions prior to the termination of the application. The planning inspector is currently considering the appeal for this decision. This slide shows the differences between the first floor of the current proposal on the right and the previously refused scheme on the left. The bedroom window of number twenty-three can be seen here. The two-storey rear building line has now been staggered. And the building line closest to number twenty-three now has the same position of the existing dwelling on the site. So that's just shown here. This slide compares the second floor. The dormer windows on the rear roof slope have also been reduced in scale and now have a pitched roof design, which can be shown on the rear elevation here. A satisfactory legal agreement to secure sand contributions has now been received for the current application, and officers consider that sufficient changes have been made to the proposal to overcome the reasons for the refusal of the previous scheme. The matters of technical opinion are the principle of development, housing land supply, the effect on the integrity of the SPA, impact on air quality, potentially contaminated land, parking space provisions and highway considerations. The matters for judgment are the impact on visual amenity, the impact on residential amenity and the standard of accommodation and amenity space. The recommendation is that permission be granted as set out on pages fifty-two to fifty-six of the agenda. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Kayleigh. And once again, this is an application open to public speaking. And could I ask Mr Silver, an objector to this application, to come forward, please? And the usual rules, the big button, four minutes, and it doesn't start until you start speaking.
Good evening, madam chairman and councillors. I live next door at number twenty-seven to the proposed development and speak also on behalf of neighbours. We strongly object to this planning application. Almost the entirety of this proposal is identical to its predecessor, WA two oh one seven oh five four seven. Thus, it follows that these plans will still conflict with the designated policies of the Waverley Borough Local Plan, the National Planning Policy Framework and the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan. The Farnham Society states that the proposals conflict with the design guidelines in the Farnham Design Statement. Excuse me. Policy FNP one of the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan states that new development must be designed to a high quality responding to the heritage and distinctive character of the area. These plans conflict with that policy in their scale, density, layout and design. The size, the mass and the forward position of the proposed two houses, two new houses, would dominate number twenty-seven. The increased height would also restrict light to the houses on the opposite side of Alfred Road. Our deepest concern is with the proposed basement that requires massive excavation almost across the entire width of the site, perilously close to the houses either side. The over one hundred and ten-year-old foundations of these neighbouring houses are at risk from the stresses and vibrations of this major work. The services of a structural engineer are required to ensure the integrity of these houses is maintained. We do not know the long-term effect on water flows underground disturbed by the deep basement and fear their long-term effect on our houses' foundations. The two basements would be wholly inappropriate and out of keeping with this road. We are all concerned at the proposed four levels of the proposed houses. Thus, the proposals are an overdevelopment of the site when compared to its neighbours. This development would have an adverse effect on the amenity of the neighbouring houses. Windows overlook neighbouring properties. There is the perception of being overlooked because of the height of the buildings and effectively full second floor, the rooms in the roof. This application is viewed as a manipulation of the planning system and an example of garden grabbing or infill development that will result in a density out of keeping with the character of the surrounding area. Provision of car parking spaces, four in total across the width, would dominate the street scene. To provide space for these cars and four paths and a central railing fence within this width is impractical and not achievable. At this end of Alfred Road, the carriageway width narrows and only offers limited parking for the existing houses, causing single-line traffic. Demand for parking already exceeds supply. There is no leeway to allow the notion of two-point-five cars per household, as is claimed. Cars leaving number twenty-five requires them to drive across the pavement. However, parked cars in the road at this point create a blind spot, and pedestrians, many of them children attending the two local schools, walk along this pavement, increasing the risk of injury. The proposals include the development of two garden rooms partway down the site. There is understandable concern that these might change into further accommodation. Land at the end of the garden, designated plot B, is subject to no plans at all. It is immensely overgrown and already attracts vermin, particularly foxes. You cannot leave plot B like this, as to get to that plot requires someone to commit trespass. Should development be considered for this plot B, it would constitute gross overdevelopment of the site. For all these reasons, we strongly object. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Silver. Could I now ask for Suzanne Hales, who is a supporter of the scheme, to come forward? I'm sure you've got the hang of it by now.
Good evening, madam chairman and councillors. During this planning process, which has taken place since December last year, we have at all times taken on board the planning department requirements. We have kept the lines of communication open with the case officer via meetings, emails and phone calls. In April, I met with nine neighbours from Alfred Road and St George's Road to talk through the plans and to discuss any concerns that they may have had. The pre-application was positively received in December, and our planning application that followed reflected all of those comments. This application has readdressed new concerns and we have put into place a complete design change in line with the plan's requirements. From the outset, my brief was for the new builds to blend well with the street scene. We have adopted the architectural merits from older neighbouring properties and in line with heritage that Farnham holds so strongly. I have carefully considered the method of build. This will give least amount of disturbance to the neighbours in terms of time on site, noise, dust, waste produced, et cetera. Basements will create extra habitable spaces which will not impinge on neighbours. Throughout the process, I have employed highly regarded professionals across a broad spectrum of professions. They have advised me and will continue to do so during every step of the way throughout the build. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs Hales. I've got down councillor Williamson as the ward councillor, but I know you're not, so I'm afraid you're not going to be asked to speak on this one. And I'll throw it open to the committee. councillor Hyman?
Thank you, chairman. I'm certainly not the ward councillor, but I walk past this existing property about every day, twice a day for quite a while and know it quite well. And I do consider this to be an overdevelopment of the site, actually. Thank Mr Silver for saying everything that I would have said, because obviously I do know it quite well, but not as well as he does, obviously. I think the site's perfect for one dwelling, and I am concerned, I understand the concerns that the neighbours have in terms of the basements. And I don't know, I would like to know particularly from our officers what sort of protection that we have, because if, I presume that developers have to have a full insurance or whatever, but if there are problems with groundwater being impacted, what do we do about it? You know, this is on four levels. I would say that this is wrong on so many levels. So I appreciate the work that the developers have done in order to try and make it acceptable, but I don't, I still don't think it fits very well. Particular issues on page forty-four and forty-five of the officer report in front of us, if I can just go down to a few details. Before I say that, I am particularly concerned with the parking, obviously, because there is a lot of problems with parking at that end of Alfred Road. And I don't think we should be consenting anything in that area which has less than the required amount of parking. So I do object on that level, I don't know whether they can fix that. On page forty-four, second paragraph down, talking about the forty-five degree lines, and this is, we noticed in the second paragraph, it says that the previous application significantly intersected the forty-five degree line. And then if you look in the next paragraph, it said that this current proposal would modestly intersect a forty-five degree line. And I'm not entirely sure what the difference between significantly and modestly is. And I would have thought that surely if we've got a forty-five degree line, the fact that it's intersected would be sufficient. To say that, well, it fails our test but only by a bit, I'm not sure is something which makes it okay. So I'd like to be explained what the difference is between significantly and modestly and where we draw the line in our decision-making on that. And at the top of page forty-five, madam chairman, it says that, and I think this is a point that Mr Silver brought up, that the nearest dwelling would be three-point-one millimetres forwards of his property and only a metre away. And this has been sort of like dismissed as not being a problem. To me, I would consider that is something we really should be looking at, that we wouldn't be expecting normally to do that to someone. It's a metre away, it's very, very close, and it'd be three metres forwards. So I do have concerns with this. Bottom of page forty-seven is the lack of parking, I noticed. I also want a couple of things to, that's my objection really, other than within the parking bit. At the top of page forty-eight, it says, officers consider that the minor shortfall would not constitute sufficient reason for refusal and was established at a previous refusal. And I think, was it actually considered? I mean, the fact that an inspector let it go through doesn't necessarily mean that it was considered. So on the parking issue, what amount of consideration was given to the parking? Because I do consider that to be very important here. It's, you know, fitting a quart into a pint pot, so to speak, and this is the sort of problem that we get from it. And just another point, page forty-eight, where it says impact on air quality, it says the site's located within AQMA. If you could just tell me whether that's true or not, because I don't think it is, generally it isn't. I'll leave it there. I think this is fitting, although I can appreciate the efforts that the applicant has made to try and make it acceptable. I just think this is fitting a quart into a pint pot and the parking problems and forty-five degree problems and the proximity. I think at the moment, unless somebody convinces me, otherwise I would be voting against this. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. I have put myself down to talk on this one. I know this site really well. It's a very difficult site. Next door to it, you've got the traditional old buildings, and a lot of them have basements. And in fact, if you go around the corner into St George's Road, there's one on the market at the moment to die for at eight hundred and fifteen thousand pounds, which is four stories. You know, this is the way a lot of them have been developed. There are some with three, well, two stories, and then up into the roof, there are some with four stories. There's a complete mix of the older houses. So what you've got here is a site, and it's always a difficult site. The house that was on, it was a total wreck when it was sold, and it lay back from the houses that stand forward, the original old houses. So how are you ever going to get a development that really fitted in well here? And I have reservations about this, but they're not reservations in terms of desperately trying to get this to fit in with the area. You fit in with what's on the left-hand side as you look at it, it's on the screen at the moment. You don't fit in with the right. If you fit in with, you know, what's down there, it was always an odd juxtaposition anyway. I have all the reservations about parking. You know, there's a park control parking zone round here. As I say, my son lives in St George's Road. I park in Alfred Road sometimes because it's a slightly less restrictive parking. You know, you can get two hours if you're not a resident there. It's not easy, but I really think, you know, to take four cars off the road as this is intending to do. I think, you know, it's my usual beef that I think it's not a bad designer. And I think really it's a question here of landscaping and of softening it rather than of turning it down. Because, you know, I honestly don't think you're going to achieve anything much better in this particular site, which is a site between two totally different types of building. You know, you can't, you just can't please everybody in this particular site. So I have to say, I'm not opposed to the four stories. And if the materials are as sympathetic as they look and do blend in well with certainly the older properties, then I, you know, I think it probably is on balance acceptable. So anybody else like to comment on this? councillor Ishwad?
Thank you very much, madam chairman. I think we have to be consistent in our thoughts and deliberations. I was delighted to hear that consultation was also taking place with the neighbours, which is something I favour. But I look at this and I think back a year or so ago to the Upper Hale Road. Something I wasn't terribly keen on at the time, but we got there in the end. It's enhanced the Upper Hale Road, the development- It's enhanced the Upper Hale Road, the development that we've seen there of, I've forgotten how many houses it was, four and then another two. This, I find, a four-storey building with a basement, yes, but using the space, we've got to use the space, we don't get any more land around, so I think we must be consistent. We've seen other bits of Farnham with similar developments that have gone on, so on balance, I certainly will support this application. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other members wish to speak to this application? Councillor MacLeod?
Just a quick comment, Chairman. You either have to regard this as a very clever use of space, you can certainly argue that, or you can argue it's complete overdevelopment of the site, that the site would be more suitable to have one larger house, and it's obviously very much a matter of opinion, but I come down on the side that this is overdevelopment of the space and it should be one, one house. That's my view.
Thank you, Councillor MacLeod. Officers, do you want to come back on any of the points raised, and before we move to the recommendation?
Just really responding to a couple of councillor Hyman's comments. With regards to the forty-five degree line, the existing building on the site actually already breaches that forty-five degree line, which is why in this instance we have accepted a modest breach of that line ordinarily. Obviously, every application is judged on its own merits, but usually that is the line, if you cross it, then it's usually unacceptable, and so that's, that's the reason why we have accepted that modest breach. In relation to being one metre away, officers consider that sufficient sort of to prevent a terracing effect between the properties and that they would appear acceptable in combination. In relation to the structural issues regarding the basements, from a planning point of view, we'll be looking at if it's visually acceptable, and structural issues would be dealt with by, by building regulations, so that's outside of our remit this evening. And finally, in relation to the car parking, it is one space below the standard, but it is approximately a four-minute walk from Farnham train station, and we have lost a few appeals that have been very close to the town centre, where the parking has been such a small shortfall, and in particular, I refer to one in Hazelmead on St Christopher's Road, where we refused an application that was below the standards for car parking, and the inspector awarded cost to the appellant for that reason, because the council hadn't had regard to the close proximity to the town centre. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. I can assure you, they don't dance like more quickly than four minutes, these, the professionals here, I've seen it, the speed that they get down from their homes to the station is quite remarkable. Councillor Neale?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, on that note, with regard to parking, I agree, but I also think that we have to accept principle as well from the inspector on what's been done before. So whilst it is below what we need, I think principle from the inspector has already proven that we stand very, very loose ground if we decide to go against that. And this actually is, whilst it looks the same, actually it's two three-bedrooms rather than two fives. So actually, it's, it is, and has been consulted upon, I think, quite intelligently, really, and I think it fits in, so, yeah, I'm inclined to think that actually this does deserve support. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we move then to the recommendation, unless anyone's got besting with a new point? So the recommendation, subject to conditions one to nine and informatives one to ten, all, I think, in your report, that permission be granted. Can I see all those? In favour, please, of granting permission?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
And those against?
Three.
No abstentions, right, you're ahead of me. Okay, thank you very much indeed. Moving on then to application B1, WA 2017 0484, land west of Bishop Square Castle Hill in Farnham, and this is an application for the erection of a detached two-storey dwelling with access from Old Park Lane. And Ruth, earning her money tonight, is going to introduce this one again to the committee, I take it. So, thank you, Ruth, when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair. The application site is located on the southern side of Old Park Lane and forms part of the garden area of a substantial dwelling, Bishop Square, which is a single residential dwelling. There is a footpath that runs down the western side of the site towards the town. The site is located in countryside beyond the Greenbelt, where consideration needs to be given to the impact of development on the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside, and it's also located in area strategic visual importance. This area will give you a bit more context to the site, you can see that Farnham Castle, a grade-one listed building, is located in proximity just here, and you can see that there is relatively low density to residential development on the northern side of Old Park Lane and a couple of residential dwellings here. Although the site is located within countryside beyond the Greenbelt, it is in close proximity to Farnham Town Centre. So the first photograph on this slide shows a view of the site from Old Park Lane looking east, so you can see here that there is an existing U hedge with a log stall in front, and this is Bishop Square just in the background there. This photo is looking the opposite direction along Old Park Lane, and you can see a line of residential dwellings along here. This is a view from within the site, there is an existing tennis court here, and the dwelling would be located on the site of the tennis court. The land also falls away down towards the town centre around the tennis court. Photo D is a view of the site from the footpath that goes down towards the town centre, so it's a view of the site from the southern end. There is some previous history to the site, there have been two previous refusals for applications for a single dwelling. The most recent application was refused on the grounds of the sighting scale and urbanising impact that the proposal would have on countryside beyond the Greenbelt and the area strategic visual importance. It was also refused on the basis that a legal agreement had not been entered into in relation to SPA contributions. These plans show comparative drawings between the now proposed, now proposed application and the refused application, and you can see, if you compare the two, that the scale of the dwelling has been significantly reduced, so essentially this wing that was previously proposed, which is at the southern end of the, southern end, towards the southern end of the site, has been removed from the proposed plans. These are comparative elevations, so you can again see that the refused plans showed quite significantly wide north-east elevation, and this has been considerably reduced in size, as has the sort of equivalent south-west elevations. These are comparative floor plans, and again, this just shows how this area of built form has been removed from the proposal. In addition to this, the applicant has proposed to excavate the land so the building would be set down a further two metres within the site, so this is a comparative street scene elevation, so you can see, this is the existing U hedge that I pointed out on the photo, and the few scheme would have popped up above, quite considerably above the line of that hedge, and as a result of the excavation of the site, it would now approximately follow the line of that hedge. And this is a proposed section that essentially gives you an indication of the levels of the land as they are proposed. So in terms of the key considerations, the proximity of the site to the town centre, I mean, officers consider that it's in a sustainable location. In terms of the impact on the countryside, officers are of the view that it doesn't, because of the result in the scale of the building, that it is no longer intrusive within the countryside setting and does not harm the intrinsic character and beauty of the countryside, and that in the same respect, it does not have a harmful impact on the area strategic visual importance. In design terms, the building follows an arts and crafts style, this has been recommended by the heritage officer, who raises no objections to this approach, and officers consider it as appropriate. In terms of nearby heritage assets, again, the design conservation officers raise no objection to the impact of the setting of these in relation to the proposal. Parking, the proposal would use the existing site access for Bishop Square itself, so access is considered acceptable and sufficient car parking would be proposed. In order to mitigate the impacts on the SPA, a signed EUU has been received with an SPA contribution towards the Sang. So if I could turn now to the update sheet, we have one additional letter of representation that has been received, objecting to the application on the grounds of loss of privacy, and this issue has been covered in the agenda report. I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that the footprint of the building states in the report that it's nine to five square metres, it's actually 111 square metres. Other than that, though, officers are recommending approval in accordance with the recommendation as set out in the agenda.
Thank you, Ruth. I will now call councillor Williamson, who is the ward member for this, so again, we'd like to hear from you first.
Thanks very much, Chairman. I should tell the members, perhaps many of them know, I do live on, I'm fortunate enough to live on Old Park Lane, and I consider both the applicant and some of the people who've written the letters friends. In situations like this, I think it's best just to stick to the facts. I brought with me tonight the Farnham neighbourhood plan, together with the officer's report, and I'm sure, as you all appreciate, the Farnham neighbourhood plan must be used in law for the determination of planning applications in the Farnham Town Council area now it is made. The officer's report quite rightly says that the planning system under which you're working is plan-led, and that planning law requires that applications must be determined in accordance with the development plan unless material considerations indicate otherwise, and I underline that, material considerations. The neighbourhood plan is the significant document that this application is to be measured against. Turning to page sixty-seven of the officer's report, it quite rightly outlines what FMP10 says, 'A proposal will only be permitted where it would, amongst other things, enhance the landscape value of the countryside.' Enhance the landscape value of the countryside. And yet, this report concludes that in the officer's opinion, the development does not have a harmful effect on the countryside, which, even if it were correct, you know, I'm not sure that many people would, would agree with that, it, it, it just doesn't meet the policy requirements in the neighbourhood plan of enhancing the landscape value of the countryside, unless you're of the opinion that putting a house on a green field somewhere actually improves the landscape value of the countryside, and I clearly don't think it does. The only exception to this is if you want to, you know, that we would seek to allow limited development in the countryside outside the town boundary, if it was supporting a rural, a rural economy, you know, if the farm or, or an industry related, and this clearly doesn't, doesn't satisfy that. It's absolutely against FMP10, whichever way you read it. The other point, I've got fifty-three seconds, the other point that I wanted to make is the Planning Act covering listed buildings, and I dug it out and had a look, says that local planning authority must pay special attention to preserving and enhancing the character and appearance of the area in which they're in. The more important the asset, the greater the weight should be placed on it. There are three grade-one listed buildings within a hundred yards, that's not to mention the grade-two listed structures. There is a greater concentration in this cluster than anywhere else in the borough, and I just do not believe that, that we are doing as the, as it says, preserving and enhancing the character and appearance of the area. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Williamson. I hope we always stick to the facts when we're dealing with planning, it's, it is meant to be factual, not emotional. Members? Right, councillor Hill?
Well, I thought the, Chairman, that the site visit was extremely beneficial, and I was initially very sceptical about this application, but I think that having seen the site itself and realising, you know, where, where it is in relation to the listed buildings nearby, that I think that this could actually, as a development could work very well, and one is inclined to support it, I think.
Right, I'm calling myself now, I think, looking carefully. I was also on the site visit, as you know, and I couldn't have come to a more different conclusion. I know I'm, you know, steeped in the neighbourhood plan and know exactly what it's aiming to achieve, but, you know, this sort of development is not part of the plan in that particular area. I do agree with councillor Williamson on this one, it's inappropriate. What I don't fully understand, and I did ask the officers this, exactly how this does differ, yes, it's been brought down a little bit, but, you know, the two previous refusals were more on a principle that I could see rather than just on a detail, and that's the bit that confuses me. I think there is a point of principle here, and I don't think this is a suitable area for this type of development. As councillor Williamson said, he's a very lucky councillor to live on Old Park Lane, because when we park there, we park alongside lovely buildings, and it, you know, it is all part of our history, it is part of the ASVI, and the views across to the castle are at the moment being enhanced, as we all know. People have been up in arms about the, cutting down the trees, but actually, what they have done is restored some of the original views to and from the castle, which existed, if you look at old photographs. So I'm afraid I went on the same site visit as councillor Hill, I probably looked through a few more knot holes in the fence just to see what was behind it, but I'm afraid I came to a totally different conclusion on this particular site. Thank you. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm inclined to agree with you, I mean, if I turn to page seventy-six of the officer's report in front of us, it's, it says that it's considered that the site of the proposed dwelling is physically, this is, sorry, the first paragraph on there, or the first full paragraph, it says that it's considered the site of the proposed dwelling is physically and visually too remote from Farnham Castle and the associated scheduled and listed buildings to affect its setting. This, I only see this as being, it's, it's creep of, it's, it's infilling the environs of a scheduled monument, and we've got so many grade-one and grade-two listed buildings around there. I think, you know, a lot of work went into the neighbourhood plan, making it right in that area and trying to protect it, and, you know, thanks for the work that went into that, in that area to protect it. The castle's very important to Farnham, it's almost what Farnham's about, it's a great about history, and I can't support this, it is, it is urbanisation around the castle, it's far too important to us, and I don't want to set a precedent here, and I think it's been refused, as you rightly said, Chairman, because of the principle in the path of this, and I think it should continue to be refused, any applications for infilling and garden grabbing around Farnham Castle. And if I could just, actually, it was, just a, let me see where I found it, sorry, I think it was about, page sixty-four, sixty, sixty-seven and sixty-six, if you could just clarify for me, because I thought that I do consider this to be garden grabbing development of land, not previously developed, the very bottom words of page sixty-six, Madam Chairman, say that it is considered that the site is not previously developed land, and that's my opinion, but the bottom of the next paragraph on page sixty-seven, it says, 'Officers consider the site does fall within the definition of previously developed land.' Oh, the court, so what is it and what isn't it? Am I Oh, the court, so what is it and what isn't it? Am I right in thinking it isn't? Sorry.
Yes, just, thank you. Right, Peter, you're going to answer that.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'll just pick up on that point, I was just going through. Apologies, at the bottom of page 66, that shouldn't have not in it. It's considered that it is previously developed land. And if you read the rest of both paragraphs, it's clear that it shouldn't have not in it. So I do apologise for that. But in light of that High Court decision and wherever it came from, sorry, not wherever it came from, when it came in, it was quite clear and defined residential curtilage which sat outside the built-up area boundary would comprise previously developed land. And that's something that we've had to accept as a matter of law. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Has anybody else? Councillor McLeod.
I also went on the site visit, Chairman, and my conclusions were very similar to your own. I thought that councillor Williamson made a, it might have seemed slightly emotional, but he gave a very logical argument. And I haven't heard anything from the officers as why they disagree with it. I'd like to hear the response to the, what struck me as a very logical argument that councillor Williamson put forward. Because that totally convinced me that we should be, apart from the site visit, we should be refusing this application.
Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. Ultimately, our position is what is set out in the report and that is the response to what councillor William says. So that's the judgement. I mean, effectively, it's set out in quite a lot of detail from page 70 through to page, top of page 72. And we've considered those and we found because it's a tennis court, it's existing residential curtilage, the way it's enclosed, the scale of the property, is found that it wouldn't be harmful to those wider specific tests of FMP10. And we consider the design is of a good quality. And that has come about through consultation with ourselves and historic buildings officers as well, ensuring the setting as well. And we feel it does comply on those fronts. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Does anybody else wish to bring up any new points or shall we move to the recommendation? Councillor Hyman.
Very quickly, Chairman, I was just looking at the bottom of page 68, so to make sure we're concentrating on the right thing. It says the test for members is whether, having regard to the changes, the current proposal has overcome the objections to the previously refused scheme. And I take it, I'm asking the officers really, can they confirm that the objections to the previous scheme, as you said, were principled rather than to the details of it? Because that's, I think that's what matters here.
Sorry. Thank you, Chair. The test in terms of whether it's acceptable in terms of its impact on countryside beyond the Greenbelt is whether it's harmful to the intrinsic character and beauty of that specific area of countryside. And as Peter said, for the reasons set out in the report, officers consider that it is acceptable in that respect. In addition to that, just going back to the previous reason for refusal, it states the proposal by reason of its citing scale, urbanising impact and harm to the landscape. So the applicant has gone, has attempted to address this by reducing the height of the development through excavation and reducing its scale. And therefore, we feel that overcomes the previous reason for refusal on the earlier application.
Nobody else wishes to speak? I'm probably going to say, if I were to speak.
And that it wasn't in principle, it wasn't an in-principle objection.
It's, you know, I think councillor Williamson is probably going to say exactly what I'm thinking, so I'll ask him to speak unless anybody else wishes to speak before his summing up.
Thanks very much, Chairman. Since we've both worked on the neighbourhood plan, I suspect we're probably of a common mind. That objection and the test tonight is not whether this overcomes the objections which were raised some time ago before the neighbourhood plan was made. The test is whether this satisfies the neighbourhood plan. It's quite clear. I mean, it's absolutely unambiguous. There is no other decision. And if you say that it refers to something else, if you try and re-challenge the neighbourhood plan using whatever arguments from the MPPF, you're double guessing what the inspector spent ages on the neighbourhood plan. I just don't know where you're coming from on it. Thank you.
I don't know how to put it quite like that, but I think I'm in agreement generally with what you're saying. So can we move then to the recommendation, which is that, subject to conditions one to seven and, there's nothing new, is there? And informatives one to two in your committee papers, that permission be granted. Can I see all those in favour of granting permission, please? And all those against planning permission? And no abstentions. In which case, please, could I have an alternative recommendation? Just the recommendation to begin with and then the reasons. So have we got somebody who will put an alternative recommendation, please?
Chairman, contrary to FMP10, I think, and.
No, 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 I just want somebody to propose an alternative recommendation. We had a recommendation to grant.
I proposed a recommendation to refuse.
Thank you, Mr. Do you have a second for that? Thank you, Mr Fraser. Right, so can we have reasons, please, for that recommendation? As far as I can see, just looking very quickly, much of the previous refusals sum up exactly what we're saying this time. That the proposal by reason of its citing, I still think scale, because I still think it's a large building, despite the fact that it's smaller than it once was going to be, urbanising impact and harm to the landscape would cause material and detrimental harm to the intrinsic character, beauty and openness of the countryside and the ASVI. When you quote the policies, as councillor Williamson says, there is no mention of the neighbourhood plan at all and of FMP1 in the previous refusal. So could we address that, please? Does anybody else have a comment on that? And obviously, you've got the additional reason, but I think, have we got a signed agreement at the moment? So that's not a refusal. Anybody else wish to add anything to that refusal? And any comments, please, from the officers about it? Louise, do you wish to comment on that? Is it acceptable?
I was just going to comment on your wording. I would just also recommend that you add in policy RE1 of the draft local plan as well, given the stage that we are at in the plan process. And also, some of the comments you've commented on this evening, I would probably also recommend you refer to FMP11 as well. So do you want me to read the full wording or?
I think so for clarity, if you wouldn't mind, Louise, thank you.
So the proposal by reason of its citing scale, urbanising impact and harm to the landscape, the proposal would cause material and detrimental harm to intrinsic character, beauty and openness of the countryside and the ASVI. The proposal would be contrary to policies D1, D4 and C2, sorry, C2 and C5 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, policies FMP1, FMP10 and FMP11 of the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan 2017, and policy RE1 of the draft local plan and requirements of paragraph 17 of the MPPF.
Thank you very much. I think that probably covers. Is councillor Hyman?
I just wondered whether I could ask officers' advice or your advice, Madam Chairman, whether we can include something that refers to the environs of the Grade One, Grade Two and scheduled monuments. Because I think that is what over, you know, is that possible or not?
I think I know the answer, but Peter or Louise, who's going to give it?
We have had advice from our expert historic buildings officer, who has concluded that due to the separation and the scale and design of the proposal, in his expert opinion, it wouldn't harm the setting of the heritage assets. So I would recommend that you stick with what I would consider to be a stronger reason for refusal and make strong arguments in relation to the impact on the countryside.
Thanks for that information. I think that's very fair and very clear. So could I move to that recommendation, that permission be refused for all those reasons that Louise has so clearly articulated? All those in favour of refusal, please indicate. And all those against refusal? And any abstentions? In that case, permission is refused. Thank you very much indeed. Moving on then to the last item on the agenda. Application B2 WA 2017, 13 Santina Close Farnham. This is a first floor extension and Chris Turner is going to introduce it for us.
Thank you, Chair. The site is located on the northern side of Santina Close. Santina Close is a residential close which gently rises to the west. 13 Santina Close is a two-storey white painted brick dwelling with attached garage. The existing house can be seen in these images. Photo A in the top left shows the front of the dwelling from Santina Close. Photo B on the top right shows a garage on which the extension would be sited. Photo C on the bottom left shows a garage on which the, shows a garage on which the extension would be sited from the rear. Photo D on the bottom right shows a relationship with the adjacent neighbouring property at number 14 Santina Close. Photograph E shows a window arrangement on the facing elevation of number 14 Santina Close. The proposed extension would be sited above the existing garage. It would project beyond the side elevation by 1.5 metres and would have a depth of 3.5 metres. The extension would have a ridge height of 6.5 metres and a knee-deep height of 5.1 metres. You can see from the floor plan that the extension would be used as an en suite. In conclusion, officers consider that the extension would appear acceptable and there would be no harmful impacts on the amenities of the adjoining occupiers. The masses of principle or technical opinion are the principle of development, impact on the ancient woodland, biodiversity and effect on the SPA. The masses of judgment are the impact on visual amenity and impact on residential amenity. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Excuse the musical interlude on my left. Right, this has been brought to the committee as you've read in your committee report, because the agent is a local member. Does anyone wish to speak to it? Councillor Hodge.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm one of the ward councillors for this area and I know Santina Close very well and am familiar with the house as well. It's a very well-designed, aesthetically pleasing extension, fits in very well with the surroundings. There's lots of other extensions, similar, less pleasing designs in actual fact, so I have absolutely no problem with this at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hodge. I think very often when we look at some of the old photographs and you think, how on earth did that get permission? Where you see sort of ugly combinations of windows and bits of flat roof. And it's always nice when somebody comes along and actually makes an improvement on something that's existing. Does anyone else like to make any comment on this application? In which case, can we move directly then to the recommendation that, subject to conditions one to three and informative one in your committee papers, that permission be granted? Can I see all those in favour of granting permission? Thank you very much. And that brings tonight's proceedings to a conclusion. Thank you very much indeed for your contributions.